And we're going to start the meeting, and I apologize that we're starting a little late tonight. We had a meeting before this one. That was a wonderful meeting, a joint meeting with the Library Advisory Committee to go over library plans with them. So they're just leaving, and we're going to continue talking about the library tonight. So if you're here for that, you didn't miss that meeting. So welcome, everyone, and we will have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Councilmember Betrand. Councilmember Botworf.
Here.
Mayor Harland.
Here. Well, everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I think I forgot to adjourn the last meeting, so I'll just do that. I did adjourn. We have a presentation tonight for the Conflict Resolution Center, so please come up.
All the way up.
Oh, really? Well, we're on television. We actually have our own channel, Channel Eight, and then we are broadcast, rebroadcast on the weekends, also on community television. Last night, I attended the 30th anniversary of Conflict Resolution Center of Santa Cruz County. If you don't know what this agency does, this organization does, you should find out. It is amazing. It is absolutely amazing. They've been around for 30 years. I've been around for 30 years, and I have watched them grow and grow and grow from a small organization to a larger organization, and they serve ever-increasing needs in this community. They work with youth, with adults, with children, with all kinds of people in the community to help solve their problems. They are true peacemakers in this community, and I'm so proud to have met a lot of them last night. And I know some of them, but their volunteers are absolutely wonderful, absolute angels, very special, very, very special, caring people that just want to try to solve other people's problems, to help the people solve their own problems and come up with their own solution that they have bought into, and they move on successfully. It's really amazing. So I'm going to read part of this. Both the Board of Governors and the State Bar and the Judicial Council of the State of California recognize the Third Week of March as mediation week. Chief Justice and Administrative Director of the Courts in the State of California recognize the benefits and success of court mediation programs. Conflict Resolution Center of Santa Cruz County was founded in 1986 to develop affordable, accessible, court- and community-based mediation and training programs for the people of Santa Cruz County. And they celebrated 30 years last night. Conflict Resolution Center engages individuals, families, neighbors, organizations, businesses, and collaborative, fair, equitable decision-making processes to address disputes which have thereby strengthened local relationships. Conflict Resolution Services encourage communication, understanding, connections, which have contributed to individual and community health, safety, and well-being. I now recognize the Conflict Resolution Center of Santa Cruz County for 30 years of very important mediation services, bridging divides and building peace in the community, and I want to thank them very, very much. And have them say a few words about the type of things that they do. If you're, for example, going into small claims court, and you don't know anything about courts, and you're being sued, or you're suing somebody else, there's a way that it can be resolved peacefully.
So, thank you so much, Mayor Harland. I really appreciated you being there last night. It was really, it was very heartwarming to have so many people there. And I want to thank the City of Capitola that has supported CRC for so very many years, and particularly when we were all facing such a bad time during the most recent recession, and the City of Capitola believed in CRC and believed in so many community-based organizations, the city continued to fund community-based organizations even as everyone was struggling financially. That's how much you all believed in being able to do preventative measures. So I think that a lot of people are really grateful for that. When you talk about small claims court, we offer people one last opportunity to resolve their conflicts before they go before a judge, which we had a lot of judges there last night, and they said, "Thank you. Thank you so much." You had the people resolve their conflict before they took up time in the courtroom. And we do a lot of neighbor-to-neighbor. We actually do divorce mediation, and our program that's really expanded a lot is Restorative Justice, where we do juvenile programs to help juveniles who are first-time offenders find a way to be accountable and repair the harm that they have done in the community. And so the Victim Offender Dialogues, the Neighborhood Accountability Board, and the Parent Team Mediations have done a lot to be able to stop recidivism. We have an 80% rate of people not recidivating when they have participated in our Restorative Justice programs. And our mediation programs have an 85% success rate, and 95% of the people who complete a mediation have, continue to comply with the mediation over a year after it's been completed. So it's a very reasonable and wonderful way to be able to have people find a way to bridge divides and find peace. So we really appreciate all the efforts that you've made, and we really appreciate how the City of Capitola has used us. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So shortly after, when we had the very contentious election season, and we found that people weren't doing, weren't listening well, we set up a Listening Zone, and we do it every Friday. So what we do is we have different, some of our trained mediators to sit on, in a public space, and just listen. And it's been really remarkable to have people feel like they're being heard and not being judged or made wrong or given advice. It's very hard to listen, actually. We would like to do it in Capitola, and if you could come up with a place that we could have, we could set up a table with four chairs and be able to do it, we would love to do that. Right now, we've done it since November 11th every weekend on Pacific Avenue in Santa Cruz, and we're hoping to be able to do it in Capitola. So if anyone has any ideas, and perhaps, Jamie, if you know how we would move through a permit process so that we could be able to do that, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is a report on the closed session, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Harland, members of the City Council. We had two items on this evening's closed session. First was a pending litigation item involving the case entitled City of Capitola versus Water Rock Construction, Inc. Second item was a liability claim, the claim of Robert Rust. There was no reportable action. The liability claim is item D on your consent agenda this evening.
Thank you very much. Additional materials? We have a couple of things on the desk.
Yes, we received three items. For item 8H, we have a revised signed letter to the MOU. For item 9A, we had email public comment regarding the library design. And for item 9C, we have email public comment opposing the extension of the conditional use permit.
Thank you very much. And there should be copies of these in the back if people would like to read them. Public comments. This is the time for the public to address us on any item that's not on the agenda. If there's an item on the agenda you're interested in, please wait till we get to it. But if it's anything else, please come up, and you have three minutes to talk to us about anything. And you can write down your name if you like, if you'd like it spelled correctly in the minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Harland and Councilmembers. Pam Greninger, I'm here on behalf of the Capitola Historical Museum this evening. And this Saturday, the museum is hosting a grand opening reception for our latest exhibit, The Nature of Capitola. And it's, we're inviting you to come and explore the beauty and the history of Capitola's natural features. Our curator, Frank Perry, did a fantastic job with the exhibit. I've seen it myself, and we would love to invite each and every one of you personally, and staff, and all our friends in Capitola to come on down and have a look. If you can't make it on Saturday from 12 to 2, the museum is open Thursday through Sunday from 12 to 4:00. And it's manned by a host of volunteers from our community, which is really wonderful. So, anyway, just wanted to invite you all to come.
Thank you. Fabulous fossils in the museum, so any of you interested in fossils, go in and take a look. They're wonderful. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. I actually had a handout, I think, that went around. My name's Tara Ireland. I'm with the Volunteer Center of Santa Cruz County. I'm the Senior Programs Director there. We at the Volunteer Center are proud sponsors of two wonderful programs, one, the Monterey Bay Retired Senior Volunteer Program, known as R S V P, and also the AmeriCorps Program. I wanted to make you aware that our current President's Budget is slated to cut all funding for the Corporation for National and Community Service, which would completely eliminate our local R S V P program and AmeriCorps programs. The elimination of these programs would directly impact 120 local schools, nonprofits, and local governments that rely on the just about $3 million worth in volunteer labor generated by these two programs. In addition to the community impact, R S V P is proven to keep seniors leading healthy, active, longer lives, and AmeriCorps members work a full year, a full year of service in exchange for just a modest stipend. This program for youth promotes higher education, builds career paths, and helps create and sustain a generation of individuals who have a lifetime commitment to civic engagement. What we're asking you for tonight is that you take a stand to help save these valued community programs. Specifically, in the handout, we ask that you send a letter to the House and Senate Budget Committees, add these programs to the county's legislative agenda for our federal representatives, and help us spread the word about the threat to these programs as you advocate and educate in our community. Thank you very much for your time tonight and attention to these very valuable programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down tonight. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Then we'll go on to City Council comments. Ed, do you have any?
Just have a couple of things. One is, I'd like to go ahead and put on the agenda for our next closed session to have a city manager evaluation. Okay. And number two, I just, recently, our last meeting, we had a meeting and talk about the Capitola Bluff, specifically on Depot Hill, which a large portion of that has fallen back to the ocean, which is going to be a natural process, I'm afraid. And just as recently as last Wednesday night, another large section fell off at the end of Central Avenue. So the reason I bring it up is I just want to have a warning to all the residents of Capitola that walk that beach, that it's really not safe to walk against the bluff, to look at the fossils. It's definitely a hazard area. The rock that fell from that most recent fall went out approximately 40 feet from where it landed towards the ocean. So it's, really, if you're going to take that walk, it's a gorgeous walk along the beach at low tide. Just want to warn all the residents to be extremely safe, and if you see someone there, advise them that we're kind of in a fragile state right now.
And if you see anyone taking fossils, please call 911 or 475-4242, so we can get somebody out there to stop it, please, to preserve them as much as we can. Jacque, do you have any announcements?
We were going to get some signs with it. This is not working. Okay. So we were going to get some signs, I think. We talked about that at last meeting.
Yeah, we've had signs up in the past. Unfortunately, we're unable to find our old signs. We have new signs being made as quickly as we can, and hope to have them up sometime next week.
Okay. So I have a couple of things. I think the last time we had Red Cross, yes, it was the Awareness Week, right? So I did my duty. I donated blood yesterday. And, you know, this is something that can save lives. You will be glad that your neighbors have done it when you need it. Also, I'd like to talk a little bit about Sanitation District. Take Stephanie Sunder away from her. She's our representative on the Sanitation District. I'm the alternate. And as you may know, the Sanitation District has a body of three. So that's Stephanie Harland, our representative, and Zach Friend, who's our district supervisor, and John Leopold. Okay. So we need their support for things that actually happen in this city. And the concern that I have is the Nob Hill Pump Station. When I moved here around 20 years ago, I was told at that time that the smell that comes out of that pump station is going to be taken care of. The Sanitation District is going to resolve the issue that has an impact on the residents, has an impact on the businesses, and has an impact on anyone who visits this city, a negative impact. So luckily, the Sanitation District met my request to find out a little bit about the problems and a little bit about their plans to fix or upgrade the Nob Hill Pump Station. So I met with them earlier this week on Monday, excuse me, Tuesday, and got a rundown on the plans. Okay. So a couple of things came out. We have two separate exhaust systems, one which is not filtered and one which is. So give me an idea in your minds, which one is giving out the smell that we're actually complaining about. I'll let you figure that one out. The other issue is, we do not resolve at the pump station the generation of sulfide, excuse me, sulfur-containing odors like it is in other stations. So I'm finding this out. So in other stations upstream, they actually inject chemical that actually breaks down the sulfide-containing organisms. I'm not sure of all the chemistry, but that gets rid of the smell. So tell me what the Sanitation District should do. They should install this system, and I want it done now. So we're going to have another meeting on Tuesday, and the company that puts out this system and actually enables the smell to be taken care is going to come to the table, and I'll get some more information back to you soon. Stephanie's supporting on this. If you have any input to Zach Friend or John Leopold, you might tell them that we're concerned about this here in Capitola. So that's the other thing. And I think we're putting on an ADA information gathering event.
April 5th.
Yeah, this is pretty important, I think. So maybe you'll talk about that, because that's been an issue you've been wanting to deal with. I just found out about this. So I'm just hoping this gets more publicity. I was looking at our website, and I saw that notice. I hadn't heard about it in any other way. And, you know, one of my issues has been that when we do things here in Capitola, get the information out. And if the website is the only way for the information to get out, maybe I'm wrong, maybe there's other ways, but I'm concerned about that, because we are subject to issues dealing with ADA. We can be sued if we're not dealing with these issues. I don't want the City of Capitola to be sued. I want this information out there that they can participate in that. The other thing is, about two meetings ago, the yearly plan was discussed, and staff put out some ideas for their options for going ahead and hearing plant, and asked for input. So we did that input. So what I'd like now to be put on a next agenda is that all of those ideas be put back to us as a report, so we can have an option at looking at the various plans that are being put out there, and our requests to make sure things happen for the rest of the year. So I'm thinking about, you know, Capitola is like a corporation, and we're the board that's running this corporation. The ideas that we put out that are coming from staff and coming from the board are important ideas that we come up with, because we respond to things that we hear all the time. So I'd like that report to come back to the City Council, so we can have some discussion about that. What things are going to rise to the top of the list that are really the most important, and which are the ones that we can put on a little bit later. But get a clear plan, how we're going to respond to the things that citizens have told us, and the things that we know, because we're the experts, that are important to the city. Thank you.
Mike, do you have something?
I do. This week, at our meeting, Capitola Safety Foundation donated money for new dog crates for the CSO vehicles, CPR for our volunteers in policing, and fees to charter our police explorers. The, one of the primary beneficiaries of the Capitola Safety Foundation besides the police department is Operation Surf, which takes place two days a year on our beach. This year, it's April 1st and April 2nd, a week from this Saturday and Sunday. And come on out, see the folks from the Veterans Hospital, former active military that have lost limbs, and they're on surfboards being taught to surf. And I challenge you to have a dry eye. So come and see them.
It's wonderful. Thank you, Kristin.
Yeah, there's a couple of cool events or classes going on here in Capitola pretty soon. The Time Bank is holding a gray water class on April 8th about how to do gray water from laundry to landscape, save a bunch of water. And they're also going to be having a bokashi composting class pretty soon, which sounds pretty cool. It's an anaerobic fermentation process, converts all your food scraps. So you can find more info on that at timebank santa cruz.org. And then also, I mentioned at our last meeting that Ambag is having community meetings, and I hadn't brought the details with me last time, but I have it now. So on April 10th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Watsonville Civic Center Community Room on the fourth floor, they're going to be having discussions of what this region is going to look like in 2040. They're expecting another 120,000 people will live in this region by that time, which will, you know, they're forecasting to create nearly 43,000 new homes, 57,000 new jobs. So this is a time to, you know, have discussions about this. Where will we live? Where will we work? Transportation, sustainable communities. So again, that's put on by Ambag on April 10th. And then, not last Friday, but the Friday before, I had the opportunity to speak with a journalism class, a healthy living class, and I believe it was a humanities class over at New Brighton Middle School. Mr. Andy Shapiro was nice enough to allow me to come listen to the voices of his students. And I was really, really impressed by the conversations that we had. And they wanted to talk about everything from homelessness and housing to youth employment, recreation opportunities, safety, traffic. They were just really, really bright kids. And some of them wrote me some letters after. And one of the things that they really expressed was that they don't always feel that they are heard, or that adults take them seriously. And so I just wanted to share that, that it was a great opportunity. And if you ever have a chance to just talk to some youth or some teens about what matters to them, I would highly encourage it, because ultimately, some of the things we're deciding on now are things that they're going to be dealing with in the decades to come. So I'm, I did ask them if they would be interested in being involved in something like a youth council, youth partnership, and a lot of them showed interest. So I'm really excited and hopeful in moving forward in something that they can be a part of.
That's great.
Did you want to add about the change of the date for that big event at New Brighton School, to let residents know?
Yes, yes. So Congressman Panetta was going to be having a town hall meeting this Saturday. Due to the uncertainty in the timing about the votes around the health care bill, it had to be postponed to next Saturday, April 1st. It will still be at the Performing Arts Center at New Brighton Middle School from 10:00 to 11:30.
Thank you very much. Jacque, you have another announcement?
Yeah, I just got the microphone off, so.
Any repairs microphones?
I just repaired it, yeah. So, I don't know what you did up at New Brighton, but you had a great effect, because the COE has been trying, for as long as I know, to get a student representative. And someone you talked to apparently is now our new representative.
That's fantastic. I'm so happy to hear that.
No, it was, thank you very much.
That's great. The, I want to announce again that SoCal School is having an information night Monday from 6:00 to 8:30, and it's going to be on immigration. So if you know people that are not documented, or have questions, or have family members or friends that are scared, there are community meetings occurring around the community, and this is the closest one to us. So it's not in Capitola, but it's over at SoCal Elementary School from 6:00 to 8:30 Monday night. I tended, the chief and I attended a, what I thought was a very interesting meeting that was called by Supervisor John Leopold, with law enforcement, community groups, community action board, Calfor charities, community bridges, medical representatives, the county sheriff, and so forth. And just had a roundtable discussion about what is the effect of all of the immigration issues that people are facing right now, and the fear that people have, and the fact that they're not going out to get services because they think they might get arrested or picked up, or their name put on the list. They're calling agencies and saying, "Take my name off the list." They're not going to the food bank. Community Action Board actually worked with Second Harvest Food Bank to take pallets of food into a part of a community that was in this county, that they don't really want to name the exact location. But the people were too afraid to go to the food bank, and they weren't eating. And some really scary, shocking stories that are going on. So what we're trying to do is work together to reassure the community that the local police are not asking for any immigration information unless they're, I guess, getting into an arrest situation or something like that. But traffic stops, DUIs, things like that. We need to have this continued cooperation between all of our citizens in Capitola and law enforcement. We don't want to have people afraid to call the police, or to call if they see a car being broken into because they're not a citizen, or somebody's house being broken into because they're not a citizen. We really have to come together and work together to assure people that they are safe, they'll be helped, and they, they're going to be, they can continue with their normal activities here, and go to the doctor, go to the dentist. But anyway, people are afraid. And so it was a very interesting meeting. We're going to continue to work together on this. The other issue is the ADA meeting, and that's on April 5th. And what time is that?
It's going to be, there's actually two meetings. One's going to be at 11:00 a.m. and another one at 6:30 p.m. Both can be here at City Hall.
Great. Thank you very much. Then it's going to be a public, you want to describe it?
So this is part of our self-evaluation and ADA access plan that we're updating right now. This is a meeting to help us identify existing barriers in the community, in the public part of the community, so that we can make sure that they're included in our report. The building official is actually leading this effort, and it includes a survey. If people want to go online, there's a survey. If you want a copy of it, you can come to City Hall and talk to the building official to help us identify where there are barriers, where there, you know, you can't access a signal, a pedestrian signal button at a traffic signal, or there's stairs somewhere, and you can't, and you're in a wheelchair and you can't get into a public facility. This will help identify all those. And then they'll all get put in a report, our access plan, that we will then come to the council with and figure out a schedule for improvements.
Thank you very much. We'd love wide participation. So if you have a minute, go online. There's also a stack of the questionnaires over at Jade Street Park, and probably some in the library. And we'd love to have your input on bad sidewalks and streets in Capitola, or bad stairs, or ramps, or access points at all, where this wonderful time to take a look at these things and make some wonderful improvements.
And I can also add that the building official has, as you said, put them at the library. They're also at the senior center. And I think there's a couple other locations we'll make sure we publicize.
Great, great. Thank you. Are we going to do a press release?
We're actually purchasing an ad in the Sentinel. We were discussing the timing. We want it with enough time to attend, but not to forget. So it will be in, I believe, the Sunday paper prior to it.
Thank you. Thank you. Treacherous comments, please.
Last night, we had a meeting of the Committee on the Environment, and on that agenda, we were planning on giving Kristin Sullivan, who is retiring from that committee after 12 years of service. She helped create the committee, was instrumental in creating it and keeping it. She helped create the committee, was instrumental in, in creating it and keeping it going and recreating it. But we were unable to give her that notice of appreciation because she couldn't make it. So I'd like to take this opportunity, on behalf as chairman of the Committee on the Environment, to thank Kristin and show our appreciation publicly for all our hard work on behalf of the environment in the city of Capitola. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other staff comments?
I did want to just add to let everybody know that we'll be putting out another update from City Hall on our website coming up here tomorrow, and published in the Capitol SoCal Times. And then follow up on the request by Councilmember Bertrand about getting a follow-up on the goals for fiscal year 1718. I can work with the mayor. I'm not sure if next agenda is going to be feasible, but we can look at getting something on coming up here in the next couple of meetings.
Thank you.
Good, good. Okay, the next item is the consent calendar, and these are items that are usually of minor nature. And so they're taken in all one motion unless a council member would like to pull it for separate, separate discussion, or a member of the audience. Would a council member like to pull anything?
I'd like, I don't want to pull anything, but if there's a, any updates on what's going on with the beach captain in our efforts to keep the junior guard programs going.
Can we do the consent and then we can have a?
Okay, so pull that and do that.
I'd like to, no, I'd like to just move consent, and then we can get a report.
I'll second that. Move consent, okay.
Would anyone from the audience like to pull any items? Then we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Discussion about that now?
Yeah, I, I just, I know that you're working very hard on keeping the program going. And if there's an update you could give right now to the community, that'd be appreciated.
I think we can give a very short update. As the community is aware, and the council is aware, what we're doing right now is going through a process to get a CSLSA charter for our junior guard program so that we can continue to compete in the regional competition. As part of that plan that we've prepared with the help of Santa Cruz Marine Safety and working collaboratively with Central Fire, we outlined the structure where we would have a Capitol employee, a beach captain. We've been recruiting for that position for the last month or so? The last two months. We've been unable to fill it. We've met with some public safety representatives, some of the junior guard parents. They recommended increasing the salary. So in your, one of your actions in, on the consent calendar was to bump up the salary. We have had some additional leads, I think, and we're hopeful that we can find someone to fill that beach captain position in the very near term.
Great. Good.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is 9A, Approval of Library Schematic Design and Authorization for Staff to Initiate Environmental and Permit Approvals. Mr. Jesford.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Earlier this evening, the, the council sat with the, had a joint meeting with the Library Advisory Committee and received a rather detailed report and graphics of our library project. We're very excited to bring it forward to you tonight for approval of the schematic design. The schematic design is just what the title says. It's, it's pretty far along, as far as we have a site plans and, and a floor plans. There's probably changes that will occur in both of those as we go, as we finalize the design. But this is the project that we will be taking and doing permitting and sequel review on. So it's important that we get this approval tonight so we can meet all our deadlines and get the sequel and get it before the Planning Commission to issue the necessary development permits for us. So like I said, we already had a rather detailed presentation on it earlier tonight. I'm going to give you a very shortened version of the same presentation. I'm going to basically take you a walk around the building very quickly, and a walk inside the building very quickly. The architects and library director remained here. We have Chris Noel and Marty Teobum from Noel and Tam, who are the architects on the project. We have Joni Janekka in the audience here, who's a landscape architect on the project. And also Susan Nemitz, who's the library director, is here. They're all available to answer any questions, either from you or the audience tonight as we finalize this project. So, really quickly, here's what we started out. We started out with basically three different types of roof designs. You know, we've settled on the upper design, which is referred to as the keel of a boat as it goes through. I think it'll be rather dramatic as we go through. So we reviewed these. We had a community meeting. We presented these three designs to people and received feedback. Here are the key comments we received from the, we had two different community meetings. We had site comments, interior comments, and exterior comments. Let me add, if you want me to slow down at any point in this presentation, please let me know. But since we've been through this, I'm not going to touch on a lot of the details here. The site plan, you can see we are on the site. The area here, the existing library is about in this area right here. The top lot, playground is going to remain there. And we'll be moving the parking lot entrance a little bit north on Wharf Road so that we can have a larger building. This is an 11,700 square foot building. And here's the floor plan as it is. Quickly, we do have a community room here, a children's reading area here. Kind of going this way. This is going to be a quiet reading area for adults here, a little outdoor area that they can read. These little rooms here are all study areas and maker rooms where people can get together, have conversations. They're enclosed with glass. The front desk is going to be here. This is another meeting room. And they had another meeting room here. I think there's actually a teen room here. There will be a fireplace here, and the rest of this is all for staff. So looking at the building exterior, this will be what it looks like from the parking lot coming into the front door. So this will be the front door here. This is the community room where it comes in. This is kind of going around so we can see the deck that will be tied into the top, the existing top lot here. And this is the windows into the kids' area. This is looking from Claire Street, as you were headed toward Wharf Road. It's kind of one of the most dramatic views. You can see here that the roof line is going to be angled down. It's going to start on the exterior and go into the interior, which will give us a very dramatic look as we go through this. This window here is in the child's room, in the children's reading room. Oops, went the wrong way. So looking, I'm sorry. My fingers got on the wrong buttons. And then this is from, looking at it from the intersection of Claire's and Wharf. This is the night vision where it's going to be lit up to so that people know what it is and where it's at. It's going to be a very dramatic look from that area. You can see we have appropriate landscaping in that area. These are going to be the, the proposed materials. It's a combination of wood, metal, and a, a rock type feature that will blend very naturally and very low maintenance. Other areas will have some concrete, and again, the wood and the metal paneling. So on the interior, this is just an interior looking back toward the front door. This would be the front door here. This is the hallway to the children's area. This is turning around 180 degrees where we'll have a fireplace and sitting area for small conversation to take place. This is looking back, turning another 90 degrees, looking into the library toward the stacks and the quiet area. And you can see the, the study rooms onto the right there. This is from the service desk, looking back toward the front door. And you can see the, the glass enclosed teen center there. This is looking the other way from the desk. There can be a quiet reading area over here, and more study rooms here. These desks in front of the, these tables in front of the service desk will be where there's public computers that they're, public's able to use. Probably be a combination of desktops and checkout laptops. Here's a closer look at the teen room and study rooms that are going to be available. They will be glassed and closed, so like, there can, conversations can take place. This is kind of trying to, the entry back into the child, children's reading room. This is certainly not something we finished. This is where it's a schematic design. This is just trying to show some architectural features that will be added to lead people back there. This certainly could be developed, will be developed as we go to the next phase. This is looking inside the children's reading area. You can see the windows and the deck out, looking out over the top lot that's there. So where we are right now is we are approving schematic design. What I briefly showed you there is formats and elevations. Those aren't going to change a great deal. They will, they will get tweaked, and the site plan will get tweaked as they get into more detail on the design. And this is the design that the Planning Commission will be going. The architects and their teams will be going through the design development, which is the next phase where they really start. Now that we have the fundamentals of what we want to build and what it's going to look like, they will get into the details and, and developing that design a little farther so then they could go into construction documents. So with that, I think we're all here, available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Are, Jacque to say anything else?
The only point I would add is that earlier this evening in a joint meeting with the Library Advisory Committee, the Library Advisory Committee made a recommendation to approve these schematics. I'm, I'm sorry if I missed that.
No, you, you, thank you.
Okay.
Jacque, do you have questions? And then we'll open it up to the public also for comments.
A quick question. I noticed the library entrance is going to be changed off of Wharf Road a little bit down towards the freeway. Does that mean some trees are going to be cut, or not?
There are significant, yes. A lot of the trees on the site along the Wharf Road will be, are will be removed and are being replaced on site. We've had done a detailed arbitrage. Some of them are diseased, and others are just in a location where we needed to build improvements. There are provisions in our code that if we have 15% canopy cover in a new development project like this, that we're meeting the code. And that is our goal, is to have a 15% canopy coverage as we go through this.
Maybe this is something for Susan, but in some libraries I've been in, a good example is the Boulder Creek Library. I've been in other libraries where there's an actual story area. I think a good example that's close is the one in Watsonville also. So it's sort of like an arena where storytime can be held. Is that something being planned for here? Obviously for kids.
Hello, my name is Susan Nemitz. I'm the Director of the Santa Cruz Public Libraries. We looked at that. Because of the size of the building, it became a difficult thing to achieve. So what you'll see, if you go back to the interiors, is that the, there will be a flexible glass wall between the meeting room and the children's area. So when there aren't programs or meetings occurring, we're going to open that up and make it one large area for children's play and activities. But we will also schedule children's storytime in that programming meeting room.
Okay, great.
Trying to create flexible spaces in a smaller space.
Okay, I was wondering how you're going to do it.
Other questions before we open it up to the public? Then this is a time for the public to come up and give us your thoughts about these pictures that you've seen and the layout of it. And we can go back and forth to anything if you'd like to point out anything. Peter?
If I could just ask a question of Steve. He was at the Environmental Commission meeting last night where Kalish, Kalash was talking about monarch butterflies and eucalyptus tree density. I know Rispin Park is a, is a dense eucalyptic, eucalyptus tree area. I was wondering if, you mentioned cutting down trees. Would this affect the density and poten, potentially affect the monarchs?
Not an expert on, expert on monarchs, but the eucalyptus groves on Rispin are on the other side of Wharf Road and will not be touched at all by this project. So I believe, what I know about the, the Rispin and the monarch groves that are, the monarchs and where they habitat there, they are protected by trees that are along Wharf Road that are on the other side of the street, and actually up a block from where we are. So I, I don't think this will have any impact on that.
You don't think this is part of that same dense grove?
No, the, the wind blocks, which is what Kalash was talking about, actually need to be within, you know, about 20 feet of the groves, of the trees that they nest on. So we know where those are, and we're, and we're protecting those and regrowing those.
Thank you.
All right. Would anyone like to come up and give us your thoughts about the pictures that you've seen, and the design, and the style, and the colors, and the landscaping, and the layout, parking? Good evening.
Mayor Harland and distinguished council members. Just a couple of things, thoughts that I'd like to pass on. I was raised to, with the belief that if you can't, don't have anything nice to say, don't say anything at all. So I'm going to start with something, actually, it's a beautiful design. I have no issues with the design. I think it's a gorgeous place. I would ask you to consider the emergency operating center. It's supposed to be an alternate place. And quite frankly, it should be the primary place considering that our primary emergency operating center is in the flood plain and doesn't have a generator. But having said that, I think it's beautiful. My concern really is, is the funding. I know I'm literally a day late and a dollar short on that whole thing, but I'm a little concerned about, I'm a lot concerned about the funding. To start off, over budget is already something that concerns me. But having said that, I think, I have some concerns about. I saw that they're talking about the Pers Obligation Money Fund, that there's a payment there. And if anybody knows enough about what's going to happen with Pers in the next 10, 20, 30 years, someone in Sacramento would like to talk to you because it's a, it's a crapshoot. And so I hate to see us spend the money. And, you know, Capitola is generous in a lot of ways. We spend 200% more in special interest groups than anybody else in the county. But yet, when you look at the salaries and the benefits of our staff, we're in the lower portion of anybody in the county. So while you're feeling generous, I hope you remember this when it comes time to look at our city contracts, how we take care of our staff and our infrastructure, and that you take the same consideration of feeling generous with, dealing with our purple, our people who actually make our day-to-day living here in Capitola good for us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Come up if you'd like to. Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Are there questions?
For, for discussion, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the approval of the library schematic design and authorize staff to initiate environmental permit approvals.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I have some discussion. I, I will commend the staff. I think this is a fabulous plan. It's a beautiful building. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Attorney, guide me through this carefully because I have a concern. We had a joint meeting earlier today, and the meeting was with the library board, and there were two items that we discussed. And we're now voting on one of those items. But the other item I don't see on this agenda. And there was a recommendation about naming rights. And I don't want to talk about that at this meeting because it's not on our agenda. So I guess I would like to put, because my experience is that when we deal with the Parking Commission, or any other commission that makes a recommendation to us, they make a recommendation and then we vote on it. And we're preparing to vote on the design. But in that meeting, they made a decision about the other item, which I don't want to discuss. And a decision was made by them. So I'm at a loss for how to proceed with that because I don't believe that the votes, that maybe the opinions of the council are the same as the opinions of the people on that commission with regard to that other item. So just looking for a little direction here.
Mr. Madam Mayor, members of the council. I think the, the answer to the question was, the council didn't take action, the library commission did. If the council wishes to take action on that, we can put it on upcoming agenda. That's not a problem.
Then I'll just, we don't need to discuss this point. I'll keep my opinions to that. I would request that we do that, and I don't want to hold up the, the friends and their, and their decisions. But I, I feel like we give direction to all of our commissions. Our commissions don't dictate us what they're going to do. We, we, the Art Commission comes in with projects. We authorize those projects. I don't know why this wasn't done, why this wasn't on the agenda. I guess I'm at a loss. So I think we should meet. That should be on the next agenda, and we should give them a consensus of this body. And with regard to the, to the library itself, fabulous building. I supported that. I seconded the motion, and let's get building it. Okay.
Any other comments? Jacque?
Thank you, Councilman Portot, for bringing that point up. I think that was a good, good one. And one comment I'd like to make that is a repeat, actually, from the library board. I don't know if the member is here, but the comment was basically that all the questions that we came up with, the architect was able to answer on a basis of a principle. So we decided this because of this. We took this decision because of this. So to me, that shows a lot of foresight in the planning mechanism and the planning effort. Thank you.
Any other comments? For me, this is a really personal moment because I was there with the hard hat on, with the shovel when we dug into the ground to build what we have there now, which we're all not really thrilled with. But at the time, we were thrilled to have a library. Our library had been closed in 1983, and that's one of the reasons why I ran in 1984. I was a school teacher, and I was... I was a schoolteacher and I was furious and shocked that the county system would close our little storefront library across the street from City Hall here where the architect's office is. Little storefront library with a couple of desks and the kids would come in after school and do their homework and the librarian would help them and you could check out a book and you could order a book from downtown. It was all very funky and we loved it. They closed it. They couldn't even, the county system couldn't even come to a, I don't know, I don't remember the financial problems at the time, but I got a call from a council member in 83 saying, "Come down to the meeting, they're going to close the library." And we all came down, but we didn't have any power. We're Capitola. You know, we weren't even part of the system. So we didn't have a library for years and years and years. So I went from being a schoolteacher to a nurse. We still didn't have a library. So finally, we got it together to do a library with our arm twisted by the county, which was a good thing actually. And we put that library there with the thought that we would build a library someday. And you know, I, we didn't know when we were going to do it. We just didn't really have an idea. And so to be still, for me to still be here today when we're doing it is very, very amazing and wonderful and thrilling and will be, always be one of my happiest moments, I think. So, any other comments? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very, very much for that. We're going to go on to the next item, which is discuss public art funding for the budget.
Excuse me, I just want to make sure we're having trouble watching it on TV, so I want to try something to see if I can get it to work.
Too much pressure? I'm good. I'm good now, yeah. You ready?
Yeah.
It gets chilly fast.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Here to talk to, one more library item today and that has to do with public art. So Capitola, as we know, has a public art ordinance. Right now, it's, the way it's stated is the city council shall basically contribute at least 2% of the amount of each eligible construction project for the acquisition of public art. What's different is the eligible construction project means any capital improvement project with a building valuation over $250,000. It also, the ordinance excludes funds from sources that can't be used for public art in this calculation. And just so, what we have more experience with is in the private sector, the art ordinance allows either for a 2% on-site public art or the applicant has the opportunity to contribute 1% into the public art fund and then the city's public arts permission will recommend public art locations to the city council. The Capitola library project happens to be the very first eligible construction project for the city since the ordinance took place in 2004. And as I mentioned before, the ordinance excludes funds in the calculation. That happens to be Measure S. Measure S funds are not eligible for the purchase. We can't use those funds for the purchase of public art, but we can use it for the places to display art. The funds that we have eligible to use on public art and the calculation are funds from the city as well as the funds from the former redevelopment agency. Staff estimates that the eligible funds for, that are, can be used in this calculation will be somewhere between $4 million and $5 million. So we're here for you to kind of talk about options. Three kind of basic options we have is for the city to allocate the 2% of the construction cost, the eligible construction cost for art on-site. We estimate that based on the four to $5 million estimate to be between $80,000 and $100,000. Currently, that is not budgeted for in the project. We could, if given direction, could work with the architects to find ways to possibly integrate the art into the, into this facility where feasible. It tends to be pretty difficult because, you know, they have their design and the artist has their design. So we have, it's, you have to find a working location because it would have to displace some construction budget to make it, you know, worthwhile where you wouldn't just have this, the $80,000 to $100,000 cost. Option number two would be to amend the ordinance to allow for the 1% public art contribution, similar to what is available in private construction. You know, again, we haven't done this before, so that was in there and we didn't really look at it until this time. The third option possibly is to amend the ordinance to exclude, you know, public construction projects that add cultural or artistic value to the community on their own. You know, similar to the library, maybe a theater or a concert venue. So we're here to kind of get your direction on how we move forward with this. Here for any questions?
Thank you. Are there questions?
I think we've had another potential fix for this, which is not one of the options that have been provided to us. And that is there are elements of our library construction that are budgeted, such as the fence around the tot lot, the trellis over the deck behind the children's area that can easily be removed from the project and the art commission can take the money that the city is now required to give them, plus add some from the art fund, have it contracted by a recognized artist and built so that we still get the items we need, yet they're designed by an artist and we get more than the $80,000 or $100,000 back for the project. Is that too much money swap for, do I need a whiteboard for this one? If we contribute $100,000 to the art fund and the art and cultural commission makes a call to artists to build a $150,000 or $200,000 item on the library after it's completed, then we've received twice what we put in and it's also designed by an artist and will be much finer and pleasing to the eye.
Are you calling this a grant?
No, well, I'm calling it a public art project done by the art commission since it will have a windfall of $80,000 to $100,000. It seems appropriate that they come out and do something significant at our library.
And just to be clear, what you're describing is option one up there. That, it may not have been expressed clearly enough, but that's the idea is that we would be expanding the budget to appropriate the 2% art and then we would look within the project budget to find something that we can take out, that we can transition into an art project.
Right. The only part of option one that concerns me is work with the architects to integrate art into the library will cost us money from the architects. If we, I would rather it say, remove an item of construction from the budget and the construction so it could be done later after the architect. As much as I love them, these things cost money when we have them, coordinate them. They've also warned us about that. So there's lots of ways to skin this cap.
Yes, Ed?
So in number two then, if item one, the item one A says the estimate is for 2%, $80,000 to $100,000, would that mean that item two, we would only, we would have to make a contribution of $40,000 to $50,000?
That's correct.
And if that money went into the art fund, the art commission could still put in as much as they wanted into that, which would virtually save us half the money.
As much as we had to put into it. The art fund isn't the general fund.
It has a finite amount of resources, so I was trying to peg it. When I think about $100,000 to $200,000, I think of something that can actually be done that we would have done. When I think of, you know, $50,000 to $60,000, you know, we're back to mosaics on the wall.
Mine was a question and I'll save the editorial banter with you when we get to that topic. The question was--
You're correct.
It would be $40,000 to $50,000 if we just donated the money to the art commission.
Based on our estimates, that's correct.
Thank you.
I'm going to open this up to the public unless there's any other burning questions at the moment. Would anyone like to address us on this issue? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Who would like to start?
I just, you know, I love this library. I don't want the, Susan, now you're looking at me, okay? You know that I love this library, okay? And I want it to be built, but I want us to remember that along the way, we are having to make up $2.4 million. So if I can make it up at $50,000 at a whack, I will continue to do that for the next two years while we try to design this library. So I know that the, and I do happen to know because we're doing budget, you know, the amount of money that's in the art and culture commission's budget. And I think it's sometimes better than what I think is in our available funds for open projects. So I would lobby for us to, I'm going to make a motion to amend the, do you mean to item two, which is to pay the 1% fee. And I'd rather have us come up with the task of finding $40,000 to $50,000 and $80,000 to $100,000. So that's my motion.
Crickets. I hear crickets.
It's not the first time.
Other discussion?
I would like a substitute motion, or it doesn't have to be a substitute motion. I think we should go with option one and it's true, we have $250,000 in the art budget, in the art fund right now. About half of that is allocated for projects that have been committed to. So it's not quite as hefty as you might think. And again, I'm more looking practically at things that can be taken out of the construction budget of a sufficient size to make it easy to bid and construct and walk away from and then go back in as the art commission and do them. And I speak of the trellis on the outside, two significant items, the trellis over the kids' area and the fence around it. And we're talking about the $150,000 to $200,000 price tag on something like that. So I'm just sort of focused on what can be easily removed from a construction contract or notice to bid, not so much that your comments are not poorly taken. I'm squeezing the pennies with you. So, you know, my motion will be to do option one.
Second?
Discussion?
With that addition, you were changing from the architect to the artist.
Right. It's not the architect to integrate, but rather post-construction that a significant element that was cut in order to save money from the original construction budget, that be earmarked for an art project.
Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Turney?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Botworth?
No.
Mayor Harland?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, not unanimously, almost. Thank you very much. We'll go on to the next item, which is 835 Bay Avenue. Thank you, everyone who is here for the library tonight. We really appreciate you being here. Extension request for a conditional use permit for the temporary display of model manufactured home and temporary sign for Ideal Homes on Bay Avenue.
Thank you, council and mayor. Before you this evening is an extension request for a conditional use permit. The conditional use permit at 835 Bay Avenue in the community commercial zone. I'll go through the history of the project for you. This, the model home is not listed as a type of conditional use permit within the community commercial zoning district. So in reviewing this use, it is reviewed under other uses similar to uses in the zone that is not inconsistent with the general purpose of the zone and the general plan. And it's subject to the recommendation by the planning commission and then approval by the city council. So it's kind of a catch-all for things that are not considered within the zoning code but could be within the appropriate zone. So in 2012, this was reviewed by the planning commission. There was a split vote at planning commission and it ended up being a negative recommendation to the city council. When it got to the city council, it was approved by the city council as a temporary conditional use permit for one year. After the year was up in 2013, the applicant, and this is just for the model home at this point, the applicant came before the city council again and asked for an extension for two years. So in 2013, the city council reviewed what had been done to date and extended the permit for an additional two years. And then in 2015, I actually brought this conditional use permit extension before you again. At that point, Toyota was under construction or redoing their building over on Auto Plaza Drive. And so with the extension request also came a request that the rear portion of the lot be utilized by Toyota during construction for storage of vehicles. So that was added to the extension request. At that time, the city council asked that the, in the approval, that the applicant fix up the area at the discretion of planning. So after that was reviewed by the, after it was approved by the city council, the applicant did put new mulch in, they fixed up the fence, they did not paint it. They didn't think they'd be asking for another extension, so at that point, they said, "We'll fix it up." They, any of the pieces that were missing were put and it was standing straight. And they also added some drought tolerant, I think some boulders along the front edge. There was also discussion of possibly having a bench along the front edge, but after looking at that closer, we thought it might be problematic of having a bench along the front edge where not many people spend time. So in January of this year, we requested, there was a request that came in to extend the permit again. At that time, the mulch wasn't in the best condition. It was, and the landscaping wasn't quite up to date, so I asked the applicant, before going back to the planning commission, to get a positive recommendation. I'd suggest that you, you know, do those improvements again that were conditioned the first time in 2015. So the fence is looking better. They've added some paint this time and the mulch is fresh again. One of the 55-gallon trees that has been on the site, they planted just to the left of the entrance when you go back to the model home. And also in this request, Toyota was planning on not utilizing the storage beyond construction, but there is a need for them to keep up with inventory. They're requesting that they also be considered in this extension. So I've got some photos that I'll take you through, but that is the history of the permit to date. So this is an aerial view, so you can see the mobile home in the front and the car storage area in the back. The building to the side of the property is where the Ideal Homes office is, in the front of that building. This is the view of the model home from the, from Bay Avenue. And you can see the green fence along, in the back, and that's where the Toyota cars are kept. And you can see the freshly painted fence along the front edge. This is looking into the entrance to the model home. To the left is the 55-gallon tree that's been placed in the ground. There's two other trees by the model home that are not in the ground, but helping with the landscaping near the model home. There's also planted annuals in that, in the baskets and the beds and that, and fresh mulches, you can see. And this shows a little bit more, so the new, updated fence, the mulch and the planted tree. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the two-year extension for the model home and for the temporary vehicle storage. And the applicant is here this evening if you have questions specific to the applicant. And I believe their lease is month to month, depending on if Red Tree were to develop this site. So if a project were to come forward, this wouldn't hold up Red Tree from telling them that the use needs to go away. With that, I'm available for questions.
Would the applicant like to make a presentation first? Good evening.
Hi, I'm Richard Amy.
Welcome, mayor. Welcome, council. And thank you, staff. That was a very good summary and condenses my presentation greatly. Understood, helping Red Tree make use of the property, that there was a contentious part of the planning commission recommending denial and the city council, as I recall, recommended unanimous approval back then. Because one of the comments made is, "Looks a lot better than a construction site." As you may recall, that site is used for Caltrans, often for construction sites, piles of roadwork and all of that when it's not utilized. I understand and was surprised at the concern of the past two mayors saying they don't think this is appropriate. I also know that I drove around the Capitola today and saw at least four or five other sites, some on 41st, some in the Village, that does have a display of merchandise. Not going to name them. I know where they are and that's not the issue. This is much bigger than little items out in front of us, of a shop. I think that the use and allowing affordable housing display to be on-site, as you know, Capitola has-- as you know, Capitola has modular units and mobile homes, and this becomes a source for people to be able to look at and design it. I also know that I've helped place accessory dwelling units throughout the county because of this operation. And I think that helps us meet our housing obligation. So I would hope you would consider staff's recommendation and continue this temporary use permit for another two years. I also disagree with the statement made in, I think it was Gail's letter, that the cars behind a fence, which is often blowing open, is better looking than the modular. With that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions?
I have staff questions.
Sure. Thank you very much. Why don't you have a seat? Oh, do you have a question? Sure.
You're making the application, I just don't know your connection with this particular business.
I was the one who helped Ideal Homes and I'm officially the representative of Red Tree. I am their agent at this moment.
Okay, okay. But you're not representing Ideal Homes at all?
I wouldn't say that's not true. I think I do represent them too, because they're paying my fee.
Okay, because of their.
Red Tree isn't paying my fee.
Okay.
Question, Ed?
I have a question. I'm not sure if you're the one to answer it. My question is, the letters we receive are identifying this building as a display. And so my question to you or to the owners is, is this a display or are there any other uses of this building on the property? That's my question.
This building is used, I will try to answer it and then I'll let the Ideal Homes.
You've got backup, it looks like, okay.
So this unit, people do go through and look at it. It is a visual display, I can't claim otherwise, and people walk through it, see what amenities they can buy.
Good evening.
Hello, council. My name is John Bars. I'm the owner of Ideal Homes. We do, the model has a area inside the model that we use as a conference room to go through options, cabinetry, countertops. We do design in the building. But the model's been very helpful for my company. People are actually able to walk through, touch it, feel it. Outside of that, we have to take them places to actually walk through a house. We do offer affordable housing for the city and the county, which is very hard to find these days. Do you have any questions for me before we get started?
I was just wondering what are their uses, I mean, what the uses of that manufactured home? Do you use it as part of your business? You said you take tours through it. You have meetings, I guess, you sit in there, and just wondering. I'm trying to make, try to correlation between, is a pair of shoes on the sidewalk? Is it a car in a parking lot? Or is there more to it than a displayed building? So I just wanted to know if, as part of your day-to-day business, would you use it for?
So we use it, we do use it to walk people through, but we use it more for design. So if a client comes in, we have a design room inside the model home. So people can, there's the cabinetry, the countertops. Every option that we have is inside that house, so we can walk them through and they can actually pick it, whether they pick different colors. We have all the different colors, materials. But yeah, that's primarily what it's used for.
Thank you.
Have you looked at other locations and all, in case this one doesn't work out?
We have, and very difficult. The only other option would be Watsonville.
One other question. Before you had this site, you said you went around to other examples of, I guess, existing homes. And you went into other existing homes that you installed?
Yeah, so we primarily just do mobile home parks.
Yep.
So, for example, we have a park up here on Capitola Road in Turner Lanes, where if we have a project going on, we could take a customer up to that house. It's in the building states, we've already sold it to a customer. But outside of that, we don't, I mean, we're only as good as our inventory. So if we don't have a house to show, then they're going to work off displays that we have in our current office.
Right. Do you do renderings that are online, so someone, you know, like you buy a house right now, you go through in a virtual environment, so you get a pretty good idea what the interior of a house looks like? Do you have that for your business?
Uh, no. I mean, we're not that up to date yet, but it'd be like going to, say, a car dealership and they have no cars. So they could show you brochures and stuff, but if they don't have a car to sell you out front, it's a little more difficult. So that we have the model, it's better that we can walk them out there. They can see it, see what a manufactured home is now. It's not like your grandma's trailer. These have come a long way. And it's the only affordable housing, especially in the city of Capitola.
Right.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
In the staff report, I keep seeing the word temporary and two-year extension is temporary. And seems like it's been temporary every two years that it's extended. So I guess my question is, is there any plans when this is no longer temporary? Is there, is there any plan to make it permanent? Is there any plan for something else happening on that property that would make this actually temporary?
Well, I, good question. I would love to make this permanent. It's not, it's not going to happen, though.
I can maybe answer that question. This, that could not become permanent unless a building permit were applied for and approved to put it on a foundation, to connect it to utilities like sewer. And I don't think that'll happen in Capitola.
Is it on sewer now?
No. It only has electricity. There's no gas, there's no water.
Where do the employees go to the bathroom?
In our office. We have two, so we have two rentals. We rent the building next door, which I've had since 2001, which is eight thirty-one Bay Avenue. And then we rent eight thirty-five Bay Avenue, where the model is. But to answer your question, I would love to have this permanent, but that's not going to happen, and we know that. The, I rented from Red Tree Properties since nineteen, or 2001. I've been on month-to-month since 2001. But they will not allow a permanent structure because obviously they have bigger ideas for that lot. And I hope the city of Capitola does too.
Thank you. Any other questions, Chuck?
Yeah, I have a question of staff perhaps, because I don't know who can answer this.
Why don't we have you have a seat for a minute? If we have some more questions, we'll bring you up.
Thank you for your time.
So the other part of this is the car parking lot behind. So what are their plans? Presumably it's temporary for them, but now they need space. So could we get rid of one and keep the other? I mean, it seems like this is sort of connected.
You, you could make a motion tonight that separates the two uses, if you chose. Their plan, as far as I know from the general manager, Gary Shipman, who's here, who might be able to speak to this more clearly, but is that they have been looking for a place for overflow, but they'd like to utilize this while it's available and to extend the use. But they have been looking for an overflow parking lot to.
You want to start and speak?
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah.
Come on up and introduce yourself and might have a question. Thank you, thank you very much. Good evening.
Counsel, my name is Gary Shipman, and I am the general manager, and I operate toward Santa Cruz. Two years ago, we did complete the project, almost two years ago now. And at that time, we fully expected that we would be able to accommodate our inventory needs. It's a two-sided coin here. Sales have increased dramatically since we put in the new building, services increased dramatically. And we're looking for additional space to put inventory. We currently sell about eighteen hundred plus new cars a year, a year out of there. And in order to do that, you need almost one and a half to two times the amount of sales in inventory to accommodate the needs of the customer. So Red Tree approached us about two and a half years ago and said that they had this particular property behind, at that time, Ideal Homes. And we made application, we fenced it, we put on-in on it in order to keep it at least at low-key. And it was going to be temporary, still is temporary, because we are on a month-to-month. In fact, I've had two notices of discontinuing it when the county was going to do some repairs or some work on the creek. And they needed that space. So we're at the mercy of Red Tree at this point, but until that time comes, we would like to continue to use it until we can find space for approximately a hundred and fifty cars.
Thank you. Chuck?
Do you have any sense of how long this would take, or is this something that's completely up in the air?
Well, we've continued to look. It's difficult. Obviously, the location of Bay makes it more convenient for us currently. If we have a customer, we can go down and take the car out and bring it up to the dealership if it's not already up there. And so we're looking for something in the proximity, closer to the dealership in total, but we've gone out as far as Santa Cruz. I'm in partners with the Santa Cruz Seaside Company. We have temporary parking there. Summertime, that goes away, quite candidly. You know, so we do, you know, at times of need, we're able to move vehicles around. But as I said, it's difficult to find.
You know, there's lots of room over by Marie Callender's. Maybe you could make a deal with them. There's a huge, huge parking area over there that's just sitting there. Nothing's, they're not doing anything. Other questions?
Questions, staff?
Yes.
I was going to ask about Toyota as well, but you asked my question.
Any other questions of this gentleman?
None for me.
Then, thank you. Maybe you have a seat and then we'll, we might have some more questions. Thank you very much.
The two-by-eight sign is something that was permitted before, or we're not seeing another sign request?
No, the existing monument sign that you see there is also temporary with the permit for the model home, so.
Monument sign's part of that, of the building next door, is it not?
No.
No, it's right over the property line on the.
So it is on the, on the eight thirty-five property?
It is, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. So once the uses no longer permit, the temporary use goes away, the temporary monument sign also will have to go away. And they'll have rights to a wall sign at that point that can come back.
Okay, there is, I thought there was a monument sign facing Bay Avenue on the other property, but I'm mistaken. Okay, good, good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Comments, but I'd want the public to.
Would anyone in the public like to speak on this issue? Then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. And Ed, you want to start out?
I'd love to. I, I think myself, as with everybody in this room, would love to see Red Tree bring a property to, to be on that spot. And I think, I'm just waiting for the right project, maybe so are they. But in the meantime, I don't have a problem with this company being here. They've been here apparently for seven years. Every time we've asked them to do something, they've done it. I just saw them out there recently painting it, painting the fence. I don't like the idea of, should they vacate the property? You know, we just had a huge cleanup with the McGregor parcel with arsenic because of dumping of Caltrans. So I would hate to see that turned back into a dumping ground. And I'm not sure exactly how much latitude we have with what they do or don't do with the property if they don't have a lease with it. I know that the tenants that are there are good tenants. I don't see a reason to put anybody out of business. I know that I confirm maybe with a head nod from staff, this business generates some revenue for the city of Capitola. Okay, so I, like I said, I have no problem with it. I don't believe that the letters that were written calling this a display were accurate. I know in a CC zone where cars are parked, cars are outside, it's not, it's not an unapproved use for that property. So I would like to support this, this renewal of the conditional use permit for two years.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
You want to go, Chuck? Yeah, I have to admit, I'm sort of torn all over the place here. You know, I came to the discussion when this was first considered, and to me, this is an example of something that is now becoming permanent. And the original discussion I remember was that this is really not an appropriate entrance for Capitola. So you want to come into Capitola, you want to see something a little bit different than a display of such magnitude. You know, a display in front of a grocery store or something of that sort, or something that goes and comes, you know, when the business opens and closes. Something like that, I think is fine. I do think there's other options that Ideal Homes could take to make their customers aware of the different options that are available in their product. The one that I brought up was the virtual design, which is now very common and actually can offer many more views of available design options that your product can make available to the customer. So, you know, I, I'm just really, you know, a little torn here. And we care a lot about our city. It is true, this is revenue-producing, and I understand that. But I'm also concerned about the experience that people have when they come into Capitola, and that's one thing we guard very closely.
Yeah, I'm conflicted too. I guess, I'm wondering if we approve the two-year extension today, is there any chance that in two years, you'll come back with plans for the site? Or is it just going to be another two-year extension and another two-year extension on and on and on forever? I'm not, I'm not, I understand the purpose and the necessity of having a model home to walk through, absolutely. And the revenue that brings to the city. I understand all of those benefits. I guess I'm just curious as to if whether or not continuing to extend the use of the model home being there is in some way preventing any, anything else from moving forward on that property? Or if there's any chance that in two years, if we extend it, there'll be something else maybe that's going to go in there, or something added that's going to go in there? So it's not just the cars and the model home. I'm not quite sure who would be the best person to ask that, actually.
Well, you know what I, you know what we could do is, we could, we could give them a year. And we could say, we'll give you a year's lease and then that's it, that's it. And then we need to move on, because that would give them, that wouldn't put them out of business right now. It would give them an extension and it would signal the property owners, we'd really like some other nice entrance there and give them another year.
I'd like to propose something else, because I'm as conflicted as the other folks. I don't think, we are the, we're the victims of our own actions. Because the council, regardless of the people who have been comprised of, have let this be extended and extended. And I remember the first time it was passed by the council, it was very definitely a temporary thing. It was very definitely two years, see you later. And, you know, we obviously saw no harmony, because we did it a couple of more times. So we're as much to blame as anybody else. I'm not going to lay this at the feet of the, of the, you know, of the applicant. But I think we do have the ability, as Stephanie said, to approve an extension, but not allow reapplication for an extension after it. We have either a one- or a two-year conditional permit, and at that point, there are no, and I'm not sure, and I'm going to go to staff with this, that if we can not leave it open as we have before for reapplication, but just give a finite extension. I realize that in two years, a different council will be up here, but we could do a one-year. And I would also like to separate this from the Toyota dealership and give the Toyota dealership a two-year extension, and they can reapply when the time comes if they haven't found another place. But can we prevent the reapplication of this temporary permit after a finite amount of time? Mr. Counselor?
I think you can do that, but you're absolutely right that the applicant could come back in two years and apply for another extension.
To a, to a council that has at least two new members?
That, that's right. So I don't, I think you can send the signal to the applicant that the council would not be interested in entertaining a two, an extension beyond two years.
If we gave a one-year extension, I think all five of us would still be up here.
We'll be here.
And that certainly is an option for you, too.
It, I'm, am I feeling any kind of consensus with the separation of?
No, I, you know, I think we need to be fair. We either have, we either have.
Well, the car lot is a totally different animal. You know, the car expansion is a totally different animal than a house in the middle of that vacant lot.
I know, but I don't think it's still what we want in our entrance. That, and that's, and that's part of the issue.
Well, then it's a construction site, because I don't see Red Tree leaping at the chance to develop it. And I honestly don't believe that the mobile home, nor the cars, will either prevent, dissuade, or in any way change the mind of Red Tree. When they feel they have a project, it'll be here. That's why they're on month-to-month leases. They're, they will not weep for the people that, you know, they have to displace if they have a good project to bring forward. a good project to bring forward. I don't think it's going to prevent anything. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah. Jac?
So, you know, I think Kristen had a good point, and that is, this may be preventing other options for that piece. And, you know, I think... I can think of a couple that may be placed there that might help Capitola, but I'm not Red Tree. I do have the question of, being that this is occupied by these two businesses, is this making it easier to... For Red Tree to say, okay, we're just going to hold on here for a while? I mean, I don't know what calculus they're going through. I did reach out through someone else to find out if Red Tree is planning anything in the near future. And as far as I can tell, Richard, you can confirm, that they're not. And maybe you have some comments on that?
Public hearing's closed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Unless you have important questions.
If the mayor... You know, at least that's my sense. I reached out through someone else. There's no imminent project.
Go ahead while you're here.
If I may, I'll speak from my dealings with Red Tree. It was real clear when we started this process that the current use of the site wanted to go for a longer-term use permit. It was clear that Red Tree reduced the amount of time they had asked for. Now, I'm not part of the up-yups in Red Tree. And I'm sure they want to do something with that site. But how soon... If you may recall, they had some plans before and were stung by some things having to do with the creek. And appropriately so. So I don't think they've figured out what can go on the site. May be a fire station. That's my personal opinion. That's not theirs. I'm going to say something that I'm not sure is in the best of interest. But should this be continued so that we can get more answers from Red Tree, if that's what we're trying to get? I think the loudly use to take place is fine. I don't know that I'll get answers. But you're asking questions about the future use of the site that I'm not in a position to answer.
I can answer.
See.
I could tell you, if you gave me two years, I will abandon that lot. And I will also abandon the office.
Okay.
Because those go hand in hand. I have an extension with Red Tree, and they said, whatever I can get for the permit, that's how long they're going to extend the building. So if you gave me a two-year extension today, I will sign a document, whatever I got to do. And come sunshine, two years from now, I'll be gone.
Jac?
How about a year?
I need two.
Ed?
Yeah. You know, I really want us to not be in a position of being a bully here, and I don't want to make a difference in anybody's mind that the cars look better than the mobile...
Do you have a question?
No.
Oh, please have you sit down. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
No, I thought the public forum was closed. I want to get back to the issue.
Public forum's closed.
Yeah, I don't think the cars look any better than the mobile home. I don't like either one of them, okay? I don't think any of us, including the kind gentleman, knows what Red Tree's going to do. Red Tree is going to base their decision based on the other project. I know for a fact that Red Tree is involved in a lot of major projects right now, and that's not the priority. I do know that Red Tree is a good friend of ours. When we work in the commissioning environment, Red Tree is back there helping us on the creek, and they've had problems with that creek and their development. I think that we all want the Red Tree property to be developed. And I... If I was... If we were going to come here and try to do anything tonight, my proposal would have been, and I was going to make a motion, that we give them two years and call it the final deal. Now, I know that's hard to impose, but I can look and see that some of us are going to be here in two years, okay? And if the intent of the council was to make this a final deal, and with the owner of the manufacturer coming up and offering that as a compromise, I don't need to bust him for a year. I mean, 12 months isn't going to make a big difference. If it's been there for eight years, and we give him two, and we all know that this is what... This is it. This is the end of the road. And I believe that he's being sincere, I'm willing to make a motion that we extend it for two years with the implication that this council has done with this as the use on that property.
Well, my preference would be to cease all those uses right now. That they've been there long enough. It's not very attractive. Kind of bend down this road again. And I would be prepared to say no, because I'm not... I'm not... I don't want the house...
Did I get a second? Because I made a motion, okay?
Second. All second. So let me finish my comments.
Okay.
So...
Just get that.
Right, right. I mean, I don't think the house is a great entrance to the city, and I don't think the cars are a great entrance to the city either. So, you know, I have a hard time just saying one's okay and the other's not. So I'm not going to probably support whatever motion is made.
Question of staff. Is there... Is there an amendment to this motion that could make it more definitive for as far as not coming back for a... For an extension?
Clarity for the two different occupants would be helpful.
I'm hearing it's all... It looks like there's a movement to keeping them together for two years. But I wanted to put something more in there, if there's any language that we put in...
Want to make a friendly amendment?
No, no. A friendly amendment about there not being allowed any extensions after this. I'm not sure, but I'm not sure...
We would have to get a legal opinion about that, I think.
That's what I'm asking, staff. Can the motion be made any stronger with regard to no extension?
I think one thing that we could tell you that we can make stronger is, is we could, you know, make it clear to the applicant and to the council that if it does... If we ever see another application, which the attorney's going to tell you legally they would be able to submit, they would not receive a staff recommendation for approval. You know, and everyone here in the room would understand that. So that is one piece of it. The other piece of it, I think, is, as part of the motion, you can make it very clear that the council does not expect to ever renew this again.
And that doesn't have to be in the motion. I think that's the sentiment that's flying around here. So I have... I'm not confused by your...
Although we may change. They're not going to change, because there is a positive staff recommendation here for this motion, so...
Right. Okay, I would support your...
And you could just...
Oh, they had a second.
You could add the language simply, "with no further extensions beyond that period."
Sound good?
I'd fine with that amendment.
With no further extensions beyond this two years.
Toyota or not addition? Is Toyota and Ideal Homes, or are we talking about just...
Both.
Both?
Both.
Reluctantly, I can see that.
Any other friendly amendments?
Unfriendly amendments?
We have a motion in second. Roll call, please.
Can you ask for a repeat?
The motion is to approve as recommended with the additional language, that there